On behalf of the Waukees Area Chamber of Commerce, welcome to this 2021 Waukees City Council Candidate Forum. Special welcome to you watching this evening's forum over Zoom. I'm Cal Laura from the Chamber's Government Relations Committee, and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. Waukees Area Chamber of Commerce helps local businesses of all sizes thrive, serving as their guide, connector, and cheerleader, so they can grow with the Waukees community on their side. Tonight's forum will feature four candidates running for three seats on the Waukees City Council. Will be voted on at the November 2nd general election. The Chamber presents this forum because we realize the importance of the city of Waukees to the growth and prosperity of Waukees. We ask that you hold your applause until the end of the forum. This evening's is a forum, not a debate, and our candidates will be answering a number of questions submitted by Chamber members. Candidates, I would like to introduce you to our President of the Chamber of Commerce, Mike Bardos. He'll be our timer for this evening, and we are allotting two minutes for you to introduce yourselves, and then a minute and a half to respond to the questions that we have for you, and we'll rotate going to my immediate right that way and then coming back on the questions. So, Mike, if you want to inform them how you will time them, I'd appreciate that, please.
So, when I hold up the yellow card, you will have 15 seconds remaining. When I hold up the pink-red card, your time is up.
Okay, thank you, Michael. All right, we will begin to my immediate right with our introductions with Councilperson Anna Bergman Pierce. Anna?
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here, and for those of you that are watching online. I think we've all gotten very good at this hybrid situation of in-person and online, but I do always want to make sure that even those that are watching online know how important it is that you are involved, that you're that you're here, that you're paying attention to what's going on, because there are a lot of moving parts in the city of Waukees, and we are just glad that you're able and willing to participate. But my name is Anna Bergman Pierce. I'm born and raised in Waukees. I grew up just a little bit outside of town on a farm. So, I grew up throwing hay for fun and driving a pickup truck much too early. And now, with my parents, I still run a horse farm, and now we're just a little bit north of town, so a little bit outside. I practice as an attorney in West Des Moines, and I have been on the council since July of 2016. It's important for me on the council to be on the council because this is my hometown, and I know a lot of us chose Waukees specifically because it does have the hometown feel, and that's what I loved about it growing up, and that's what I like to try to preserve when we're making decisions about the future. I live in kind of the older part of Waukees, not too far from here, with my husband Ryan. We just got married in April, and we are the proud parents to three very crazy doodles that if you ever walk the Heart of Warrior Bike Trail, you will not miss them because they greet everyone that they see and are just a little bit too friendly sometimes. But we have 10 horses and three dogs, and I am just very honored to be able to serve you, and I hope to continue to serve you.
Thank you, Anna. Councilman Charlie?
Thank you. As noted, my name is Charlie Boddenberg. I've served as one of your City Councilpersons since February of 2017, when I was appointed to the remainder term of vacant seat, and then elected in November of 2017 for this seat. I haven't lived here quite as long as Anna has, but I've lived in Waukees for just shy of 16 years now. My joke in 2017, it's still true now, was we loved it so much that when our family got too big for our house, we managed to move a whopping three blocks to a bigger house and stayed in Waukees. Originally came for the schools, originally came for the hometown feel, and have been proud to help the amenities grow and see that'll happen in Waukees. By way of background, I'm also practicing attorney. I maintained a law firm here in Waukees from 2013 through the end of last year, when I moved my practice downtown. You've probably seen my advertisements in the Living magazines or the My Waukees magazines, if you've been paying attention. Yes, this is my face and the bowtie, which, if you're out and about, you will not see on me. But served as on the Board of Directors for the Waukees Area Chamber of Commerce for a number of years, and I was the board chair when I was appointed to this role on City Council. On City Council, under two different mayoral administrations, I've been the mayor pro temp, which essentially makes me the vice mayor and the presiding officer when the mayor can't be here. As far as why I'm running for City Council, same reason I ran in 2017. Five major pillars. I want to increase the amenities that are available to the residents here in the city. I want to see our growth rate continue, maybe not at quite the breakneck speed that we are, but continue to grow in a sustainable fashion. I want all of this to be done on a fiscally responsive and responsible way, making common sense decisions that make sense for our city. And then I want to be here and representative and responsive to anybody who has any questions or concerns, and be able to take advantage of those. So, again, Charlie Boddenberg.
Thank you, Charlie. Our next candidate is Mike Kern. Mike?
Thank you, everyone, for attending, and those on Zoom, I appreciate it. My name's Mike Kern. I've been a resident of Waukees, we're going on 22 years now. It was about a little less than 5,000 when we moved here, so actually a lot of growth. It's been a great city to finish up our kids' education. My biggest thing, deciding to run for council, my neighbors thought, let's go to politics, try this out. That's why I decided, I've had some experience working in housing and economic development, and I've lived in Illinois. I can bring that to the table. I had a lot of background in financial services and insurance since we've been here in Des Moines area. I am not an attorney, though. But I, my issues that I want to focus on if elected are more, make sure we're continuing with our workforce housing, because we'll have a lot more retail, and we need to have some housing that they can afford. There's big issues, long-term, on water supply and where we're going to get it, and how much safer we're going to have on that. And I've also mentioned, if you see my brochures, we need to have the nice, the green space and the parks and recreation amenities like we have right now. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Our next candidate is Councilperson Ben Sinclair. Ben?
Hi. Well, I'm Ben Sinclair, and I thank everyone also for being here tonight on Zoom. I've lived in Waukees for just a little bit over 10 years now. Prior to that, we were in Beavertale, and I grew up in West Des Moines, for the most part. So, I've always been kind of in the metro, but I lived here with my wife and daughter, and we just really love looking at each other. I've been very proud to serve you Waukees as a council member for the past almost two years now. And outside of council work, I'm also not an attorney. I'm a software developer, but I help clients build apps, websites, do digital marketing systems, things like that. I'm also somewhat actively found in the local startup community. I work on a few projects here. I've been trying to bring some of that startup energy to the city of Waukees, and just in how, you know, what kind of businesses and strategies we have. Some of my priorities for the future of Waukees. I'm sure we'll get to some of this, but, you know, traffic safety and efficiency is something I've, you know, I've been talking about forever, and we've made some great progress in the past year with Douglas and the five-way and all that stuff, and there's a lot more to do, and I'd like to continue working on that. Also very interested in sound fiscal policy, but also reducing our property taxes as we expand our commercial valuation. Voted twice now, I guess, to direct the state to lower our property taxes. So, excited about that. Affordable housing is also another issue that the council has been, and myself have been looking at for forever now, and I feel like we're actually going to be starting to make some real progress on that soon. I've got 15 seconds, so I was going to say Waukees has great momentum right now, and I look forward to continuing to serve you as a member of the City Council.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Now, Charlie and Mike, I think you and to somewhat, to some extent, Ben, you answered my first question, or our first question is, why are you running for City Council? So, I think I'll defer to Anna, if she would follow up on that question, please.
Sure. I am running for reelection for the same reasons that I threw my name in the hat to be appointed five and a half years ago. And the reason that I love serving in this position is because this position truly is about service. It's not about politics, it's about people and what is best for them. It's not about just the city and the city's interests. It really, truly is about our neighbors and the people that grew up here, the people that just moved here, the people that call Waukees their home. Because when you choose to call someplace your home, then you're investing into that home. And because it's your investment, you want to see things like your return on investment. You want to see, you want to know that there's transparency and how your investment is being spent. You want the people that are making the decisions for you to be accessible. And I think that we all have worked really hard to be accessible, accessible in times where maybe it was difficult to be accessible, because it is important, because this place that we all call home also provides us our sense of security, our sense of community, our sense of belonging, and it's just, it's crucial that we protect it, and as my hometown, that is just my, that's my number-one priority.
Okay, thanks, Anna. And we'll move on to our second question, and Charlie, I'll begin with you. What are the top responsibilities that come with being a member of the Waukees City Council?
Sure. It's a fantastic question, because I think that's probably one I couldn't have answered prior to being on City Council. So, I think a lot of people have the assumption that being on City Council means that you are in charge of the nitty-gritty, day-to-day changes that we see in our city, when that probably couldn't be any further from the truth. The job of City Council is to set the priorities, which we do every spring in a two-day visioning session, set these are the goals, these are the priorities the council wants to see. These are, you know, the rough objectives, and then let our absolutely fantastic staff go forth and frankly do their job. We have, I still think, the best staff in the metro. I put us toe-to-toe with any other city in the metro. And so, from my perspective, it doesn't make any sense to micromanage someone who's going to do a better job than I would at it anyway. I'm not, you know, an engineer, I'm not a developer, I'm not a city planner. So, council's role in this whole process is to set the agenda, let city staff know these are the things that we're passionate about, these are the things that we want to do, whether it's green space, which we changed the ordinance this year to require more green space, whether it's workforce housing, which we're in the process of looking at putting up some city-funded projects, whether it's a pool, whether it's anti-roundabouts, which I've been a vocal opponent of those for a while, and everybody out there in the staff is shaking their head at me. But yeah, it's our job to set the agenda and then watch it happen.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Mike, what do you feel are the top responsibilities that come with being a member of this council?
Well, as I said, I worked in city government before, but it was a totally different format. We didn't have a city administrator. So, those aldermen and the mayor were more in the day-to-day operations and talking with directors and so forth. Now, with the city manager format, we're more oversight, and I've talked to Tim a couple of times, and he talked about the spreading agenda where we're getting set. Through the area, we'll keep it, make sure they're on track. And issues arise, as individuals reach out or groups reach out, I'll see what we can do to make changes, but for the most part, it's just setting the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Same question to you, Ben. Top responsibilities that come with being a member of this council?
I'd start with talking about the personal responsibilities that come with being a member of the council. I mean, there's a lot of work to do, but you also have to be passionate and excited about it and about the city. And I think a lot of my neighbors know that if they get me talking about roundabouts or parks or whatever, I won't stop talking about it. But that goes along with, you know, responsibility of being somebody that's approachable and, you know, wants to engage with the community on things like that. But outside of that, we're going to end up pegging each other on these, you know, those second or third. You know, our role really is to set the agenda, and one of the things that I was talking to somebody about a while back, they, you know, asked, you know, why do you always have unanimous votes on them? Well, it's because we do strategic planning, and we come up with things that, you know, we direct the city staff to work on and look into. We have work sessions and other meetings. Things aren't going to come to a vote that they know we don't want. So, doing that strategic planning and setting the agenda and everything that's on those posters up there. I was joking about referring to those posters, but that's about what we're doing. Everything that's on there is, that has come out of strategic planning, and our guidance to the city and city staff is fantastic at getting things done.
Thank you, Ben. Anna, same question to you, please.
I think the two most important things that we do as council members is listen and learn. And what I mean by that is, our job is to listen to each other when we have new ideas. Our job is to listen to staff when there's a, perhaps a creative solution that is needed. Our most important listening job is to listen to our residents, to listen to them when they bring their concerns, to listen to them when they have ideas for our community, when they have fear, when they have great things that are happening that they want to report. It's our job to listen to everyone, and then the second role is to learn. And that learning never stops. We learn every time we are reading our council packet in preparation for our meetings on Mondays. We're learning when we're talking about how maybe we could advance into more public-private partnerships, how we can supply city services more efficiently, how we can be more creative in our approach to some of these, we call them here, we call them good problems, that the city is growing so quickly, that our two biggest priorities are infrastructure and public safety. Our two biggest budget initiatives are infrastructure and public safety. And our job really is to wake up every day and never stop listening to people when they raise any sort of question or comment or concern, and then to learn new ways that we can think about Waukees, not just for tomorrow, but for 20 years from now.
Okay, thanks, Anna. We'll move on to our third question, and Mike, we'll begin with you. What are some opportunities that Waukees can capitalize on?
Well, because we have, we're still growing, we have a lot of vacant ground around, so now is that time to work on the affordable and workforce housing time. Waiting until, you know, everything is all developed and then trying to figure out where we're going to put this housing. That's not the time to do it. So, I too am lucky, you know, 20, 30 years out of the road, and we're going to be a much bigger city, have more jobs here, and, you know, get other amenities for different income people, more walkability, so a little bit, maybe a little bit different design options that we could look at.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mike. Ben?
You know, I would say our biggest opportunity is our combination of our growth, our fast growth, also our ability to, or let's say, our growth state that we're in right now. You know, we are starting up that, you know, we already are in that quick growth stage, but we are able to look at past examples, other cities that have done to the same things, and do it better. And I think that's the key thing that we can do right now, is learn from what others have done, and then also capitalize on that growth and all the new, you know, commercial valuation, everything else that's coming in, to continue to make Waukees, you know, the best city to live in, as far as I'm concerned. You know, that's, we talk about economic development and attracting businesses. Just making Waukees a great place to live was kind of where I kind of landed on that, you know? And I think our city staff does an excellent job of looking at creative ways, like, I guess, like you were talking about, to just take advantage of the incredible growth and the position we are in right now.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Anna, same question to you. Opportunities for Waukees?
I like the question. The one where I'm hesitating is that I hate to just quantify it as there's only a limited amount of opportunities, and I don't think that's the case. Even over the last five years, we've learned what opportunities we have. One of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, as one of the highest-rated cities in the nation, the opportunities, and I hate to sound cliche, but they really are endless. There are so many things that we can do to use the growth that we have and turn it into a strategy that is looking out for Waukees in the future. And what I mean by that is that we do, we look at examples of cities that are twice and three times plus our size. We look at what they did right. We look at things where they have some heartburn or some things that maybe didn't go quite as well as planned. Every time we're approving a new development, every time we're looking at what our tax base is, what the makeup of our tax base is, we're looking at what are those opportunities? Where are those, where are the businesses? Where are the different types of development that we can encourage and we can attract to Waukees? And I think that we have not even scratched the surface of where that will be. I think there are going to be so many things that come up for Waukees in the future that five years from now, Waukees is going to look completely different than it looks today. And I think that's a really, really neat place for us to be.
Thanks, Anna. Charlie?
I think our biggest opportunity is just the blank slate that we still have for our community, and again, the tremendous staff that we have who are helping us manage the growth in an incredible fashion. In 2017 and 2018, Councilmember Bergman and I, you know, helped set some of these policies. We watched Apple come in. We're about to see some of the fruits, no pun intended, that was fun. Of some of those decisions show up. You know, Councilmember Sinclair has been part of that for the past couple of years. You know, we've, we've taken an approach of how can we continue on with our growth but make our city better, whether it's design standards, like the Kettleson Design Standards that we've implemented, whether it's increasing the amount of green space that a developer has to donate to the city in order for parks and for green belts, or whether it's, you know, looking at different parcels potentially for putting in some city-funded or some city-subsidized workforce housing. I think Mr. Kern is dead on. We can do much, much better than what we have. There's some real challenges. Ground is not, is not cheap out here, but with every challenge, there's an opportunity, right? So, it doesn't mean, okay, there's a challenge, doesn't mean you walk away, it means try to find a creative solution, one we've been working on for a long time. And lastly, we have a civic campus and a public safety building coming up in the next decade that we'll be putting in. Huge opportunity to make that a space for everybody, just like Triumph Park is going to be a space for everybody. That was an opportunity that we capitalized on, and we need to keep doing that.
Thanks, Charlie. Fourth question. Ben, we'll begin with you. What are some of the issues the city of Waukees needs to address in the future?
Well, one of the big issues that Waukees and other neighboring cities are going to have to address is our water system. You know, we're growing very quickly, and we need to make sure we, our water system grows with that, and we're all dependent on Des Moines kind of out here, and so that's an active project we're working on. I think I'm very optimistic about a good solution. We're kind of looking for that. And the similar thing with, you know, our natural gas strategy, that's a long-term project that we'll, I think we'll be working on. I think the other kind of general challenges are just, you know, maintaining what we have as we grow to be, you know, 40, 50, 60,000, maybe that's where we'll pop out, maybe more. We have a lot of small-town feel and, and things like that, that are challenged to maintain as you grow. And I'd like to figure out how to do that, and I think a lot of that comes from economic development and getting, attracting the right kinds of businesses, keeping neighborhoods kind of intact and...
I felt like you got red-carded, like in soccer.
Anna?
So, I think a lot of the issues are things that we've all been talking about. We know that in Waukees that we are, we're growing quickly, and with that means that we have to act quickly. And what I mean by that is that we have to make decisions on a pretty, we have to be, what we need to be prepared, and we have to make decisions when we're here, present, and together, and there really isn't any time to wait. So, I mean, yes, we have issues, but I think more than anything, what we, what we try to do is address those issues, find what those issues are, and come up with a solution before they actually are a problem. So, before you and I, as neighbors and residents in Waukees, are having issues, we're already working on them. One of those being water supply, which we have been working on since I've been on council. And that is, that's something that is, of course, is a challenge for a growing suburban area, but it's a challenge that we aren't alone in. So, I think one of the things that we have done is we've partnered and worked with other suburban cities in our area to try to say, hey, look, you know, this is not an issue that is mutually exclusive between us and our neighboring cities. And so, I think a really neat thing for us to do, and when we're looking at issues like storm water detention and retention, water supply, is to partner with our neighbors and work with them. So, I really do, I know we have issues, but I think that we are addressing them.
Charlie?
Three that come to mind, four that come to mind, bad math, would be water, workforce housing, school division. I'll talk about that in a second. Traffic on water, to echo what Anna has stated. We're in the process of building an ASR. Essentially, what that lets us do is take excess water in the winter, when we're not hitting our peak, shove it into a large hole underground. Rudy explains it way better than that. And then in the summer, when everyone is irrigating and we run into those peaks, which, by the way, every time we hit one of those peaks, it increases our cost of the rest of the water, we can pull out of that ASR, and instead of increasing our water cost, we've got a reserve. Workforce housing, I've already said. Traffic, we're a growing city, traffic is a problem. I think every single time we meet, we talk about traffic, that's not going to stop. This is not a job for the squeamish who people don't like traffic, because you're going to run into it all the time. School division, specifically, you know, we're a community that went from one school district to essentially school, two school districts housed under one Board of Education or one school board. We've got two separate high schools, we've got a bunch of different schools going on. It's going to be a real challenge to keep that close-knit community that we have going right now, where everybody, up until this year, who went through the Waukees School District, went through the same high school, went through the same ninth-grade building, went through the same, well, not the same, but went through one of two middle schools. So, keeping those cohesive fabrics together in a time when things are going to start pulling apart, that's going to be, that's going to be a real issue we're going to have to look at.
Mike, you're next with that question.
I think one of the things you could already see is, we're all talking about the same issues. The one that I could see that's going to cost, involve a lot of planning, and also will be water supply. I heard different stories. I know right now, we are just like an individual as far as the city goes. Des Moines says, here's the water, here's how much it costs, you say that. We need to have some say in what the city of Des Moines, Des Moines Water Works, or I guess I heard that we might, there's an option of going with another town and trying to get our own supply. The other things that we don't know, factored in is what the climate's going to be like. That that may cause some changes in how we look at water, but I don't see that as doom and doom by any means. I will.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anna, we'll begin question number five with you, please. How do you balance growth with the services that are required to the residents of the city?
Yeah, so we were actually just talking about that earlier. So, what, what we do is we always, we strive for excellent service in all categories. Now, that is, that you can imagine is tough in a growing city, because we have a budget, and we have a budget that is, is limited by a certain amount each year. And so, when we are getting together, which will start that process soon, we sit down, we look at what the budget looks like for the next few years, what the upcoming projects are, what needs to be prioritized, what is consistent with what we've been prioritizing in past years, and what we need to do to propel those budget items forward. Like I mentioned earlier, the two biggest budget items that we have are infrastructure and public safety. That is, those are good problems to have, because it means that we are growing. It also means that we have aging infrastructure that we have to take care of. So, it's not just a matter of building roads, but it's, it's also making sure that we... that we are connecting our trails, that we are maintaining the infrastructure that we have. And the balance between that really comes down to what we make sure that we prioritize financially. We look at the levy rate every year to make sure that we are being efficient as possible. So when property tax values go up, we look at what our levy rate, what our percentage of that is, and can we lower that to get some relief to our constituents? We've been able to do that multiple times since I've been on council. And I think that is a great way that we try to balance providing services most efficiently.
Thanks, Anna. Charlie?
She ran out of time, so to finish her off, for those of us who've been on since 2017, this will be the fourth time in five years that we will have voted to lower your property tax levy rate, which I recognize doesn't necessarily mean your taxes have gone down, but we're not in charge of the assessment values, just how much we tax them. As far as growth versus services, there's such a huge formula that goes into that. And there's so many different key portions. One of the things you don't realize before you sit in these meetings all the time is we talk about sanitary sewer basically nonstop. I give Director Kester a really hard time because he comes up there and he pitches us a project and I tell him, hey, you're not nearly as excited as Parks and Rec is. It's because all he gets to talk about is this lift station to literally pump human excrement from point A to point B and then talk about how we're going to grow it. But you don't grow unless you have a sewer that connects to it. So the number of times that we set up here, which is pretty much every single week, and we talk about this sewer is going here and this sewer is going there and this sewer is going there, it, it's really, really relevant because you don't do that, you're not building more houses. You're not building more commercial anything if there's not a sewer to, to be there. Additionally, we spend a lot of time every year talking about these are the staffing positions for the next five. Do we get it right? No, sometimes we adjust up, sometimes we adjust down, but it's something we look at every year. It's something that's looked at quarterly as an adjustment and there's a presentation made. And as far as, as I'm concerned, same as Anna, having excellent service, not good, not good enough, excellent service is the goal and, and the key is to have enough people to do that.
Okay, Mike, you're next.
Ben, as you're talking about the stores, where I moved from, there was a much older town and there was a lot of inconvenience and tearing up the streets to repair sewers. We're fortunate here in Waukees, most of our housing is within, you know, twenty, thirty years or, or even younger. But we will have a portion back here, older Waukees will have to address that, I'm sure. Been discussed, but those older sewer lines do not last forever and it'll be very inconvenient while they're being repaired. And then that, I forgot the rest of the question, I apologize.
In reference to how do we balance the growth and maintaining services?
Well, like one of the ones I've heard that you're debating is when university goes through. You do the all four lanes at once? Are you going to do the two lanes now and then do the, the others later? Because you can maybe throw, use some of those cash reserves at this time rather than, and then wait for another five, six years maybe and add that other lane. So it's just a little bit of a trade-off that you've got there.
Okay, Ben, how do we balance growth and services?
Yeah, well, I, I think I would say we're doing a good job so far. I, I think one of our key assets is that the castle and the city staff has a growth mindset. You know, we're planning for these things right now. Talking about, you know, sewers, you know, Detroit is absolutely right, you know, every other item is a, is a sewer extension and that is what drives development. The other thing, I, I didn't realize how important stormwater management was to how the city grows until we talked about that every other day. But the, just some examples of how we're, you know, I mean, you know, for future services and growth. Now, like, like you mentioned, the public safety building, you know, that's the sort of thing that we're proactively getting going before we need it. Our, our roads plan goes out many, many years and we know what direction we're driving growth, where we're going to need things, public safety as well. You know, there, there are formulas for, you know, how, how much public safety staff you need, you need based on population. We, every year, use that and add what we need. You know, I, I do still see that, that, you know, only challenge to all that being utilities. Right, right now, there's only so much we can do until they come up with a larger strategy for managing utilities.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Question number six, we'll begin with you, Charlie. How do you plan to engage with the community to ensure that you're aware of the issues that are important to the residents?
Sure, I'm available all the time, whether it's via phone, whether it's via Facebook, whether it's via email. I've been just in the past year to three or four different citizen concern group meetings with Mayor Clark, whether it's been about traffic, whether it's been about development. There is never a time that I hesitate to meet with someone and, and talk to them about their concerns. Does that mean that I'm going to necessarily agree with their viewpoint? No, does that mean they're going to get what they want? Maybe not. But, you know, as, as Anna noted, half of this job is listening, the other half is learning. And so if you're not out there and you're not listening, you know, you're never going to learn. Am I perfect? No, have I, have I dropped the ball? I'm absolutely sure I have. I'm absolutely sure I've forgotten to respond to people. But, you know, my number one favorite thing I like to hear is, wow, I can't believe you responded that fast, which a little shocks me because it goes to your phone, right? Like it's an email, it's, that's kind of how the world works. But that, and, you know, thanks for responding, whether it's been phone calls on the weekend, whether it's when I'm on vacation, doesn't matter. I mean, this, this job, even though it seems like it's an every other week thing, it's, it's on just as much as my, my day job is. And being responsive is my absolute proudest piece of being on city council is I know that I respond as best I can to every citizen concern and I want to be there for when people have questions, comments and concerns.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Same question to you, Mike.
Well, I will probably continue to do some door knocking in, in between. I, I like campaigning and knocking on doors and talking to people. That's, you're going to get your best feedback from them. I found the council, I think I'm going to try holding like a little monthly get-together at Caribou or one, one of the coffee shops. Some of the representatives of city council people in the other cities frequently do that. Keep in touch. I'll have my Facebook page and even now I'm getting emails and calls and I get back through some and keep up with it.
All right, thank you, Mike and Ben?
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, those interactions are sometimes one of my favorite things about, about this. But, you know, just today I was holding up someone in my IV because the cashier saw my Waukees sweatshirt and asked me about water. And I held up a line talking about the ASR well, which whenever I talk about water, I like to talk about that. But, you know, I, you know, just, just being responsive and being out there with neighbors at Harbor Store and at IV or wherever you are, you end up being, to some extent, one of the faces of the city. And you have to embrace that and, and be happy to talk to people. And I am, I'm doing it.
Okay, Anna, same question to you, please.
Well, I would say, I would even go so far as to say that we can't do our job unless we're regularly communicating and hearing from our constituents. I think that is perhaps one of the biggest parts about this job, one of the most crucial parts about this job. And I think one that we all take very seriously because even if it is, if it's at IV, come and go, if it's over the phone, a text, a Facebook message, a Facebook post, a neighborhood group post. I mean, I could go on and on because in this day and age, accessibility is relative. Like we are, we are all accessible 24/7. So it's our choice on how responsive we are. And it's our choice on how much we're listening. And so it's a matter of going over to someone's house to see what happened to their backyard on my way to work or to take a phone call over lunch to talk with people about what may be going on in their neighborhood or going on in their lives, what they're seeing that's a concern to them. It's checking your email every time you're on a break. It's checking your email before you go to bed. I mean, it really, it, it does not stop in a very good way. Because there, the, the good part about it is that without the feedback from our constituents, we wouldn't be making these hard decisions that we're making. And the good part is we know if we're hearing from people, that they care about this community. And that is the most, I think the most rewarding part about this job is we have a community that really, really cares about what's going on.
Okay, thanks, Anna. Okay, our final question, and Mike, we'll begin with you. What is your vision of a thriving Waukees?
Population-wise, I'm not sure where we're going, sixty thousand, seventy thousand or so. It will still be more or less a bedroom community. There'll be more blue collar work, hardly any, any manufacturing or anything like that. So a lot of like what you see in downtown Des Moines with the insurance, financial services, that's what we're going to be seeing out here. I want to be able to see different amenities of grocery stores. I love IV, I love Fairway, you know, those are great, but maybe we'll get a little, some other niche markets that, that people could go to. We hope we get, we'll have some big box retail, but it'd be nice to get some nice, small, unique shops as well. One, when I was talking with Tim or somebody, I forget what you were talking about. One of the things I would love to see is like a year-round Christmas shop out in Kettlestone somewhere. I think that would be, be great.
Okay, Mike, Ben, what's your vision?
My vision, well, I, I don't necessarily see us as a bedroom community. I, I feel like I want people to be able to live and work in Waukees. And we have built out Grand Prairie and some of that empty space out there. You know, when, when I started in this, before that pandemic, yeah, I was, I was thinking we would fill that up with classy office space. And, you know, that, that's changed. I, I have some ideas, you know, we're talking about around, you know, being a remote work home. You know, if we have all these, you know, amenities available and, and we already have fantastic internet service out here. You know, and it's being a place where you can work remotely and then go out for lunch on Grand Prairie. But as, as well as that, you know, we've seen some new businesses out there, you know, in, in kind of a tech and, and startup world and, you know, being a hub for that as well. But keeping all of that in, in mind, you know, as, as we grow and being a place that we come home, still have a small-town feel, still have our, our festivals and our great parks and trails. But, you know, we're, we're growing, we've got a lot of space. And, you know, we're going to get that entertainment, we can get those amenities, we're going to get that big box retail and we're going to be a great place to work a lot.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Anna?
I alluded earlier that one of my biggest priorities is maintaining the hometown feel that we have in Waukees. And part of that is those festivals that we put on, the, the opportunities that we have to get together and be a community. But I, I will agree with Ben that it, that goes a lot, that goes beyond just jobs and housing. Do we want people to be able to start their small business here? Yes. Do we want them to send their kids to school here? Yes. Do we want them to be able to work from home, to commute easily to work? Do we want them to be able to have a trail, say, I don't know, in their backyard that they can just go walk and get all the way to Clive or downtown Des Moines if they're so inclined? Yes, absolutely. That's a, that's a hundred percent what we want. But we want more than that. We want Waukees to be a destination and we are on our way to being a destination. And it's, it is the schools, but it's also the fact that we have, we have what Charlie alluded to earlier. We have a blank slate right now and that gives us the opportunity to dream a little bit bigger. So I think every year in strategic planning, we talk about our, our, our moonshot ideas. And we have so many of them that I think, I really do think the vision for Waukees is just going to be a pretty incredible place where people are living, they're working, but also they have something here that they can't get anywhere else. And I think that is the coolest part about Waukees.
Thank you, Anna. Charlie?
My vision is a place where you can live, work and play, right? Right now, we have tons of living opportunities. We've already discussed, we need more, you know, workforce housing, we need more affordable housing. It's something that we talk about, gosh, at least six times a year. We need more office space. When I was looking to locate my law firm, I actually was behind the Jethrose in Waukees. That's West Des Moines for those who don't know. And it was an absolute bear to find office space in Waukees for me to locate. It's not a ton better six, seven years later. It's gotten better. We continue to make strides, we need to keep doing that. And most importantly, recreational opportunities, whether it's green space, whether it's trails, whether it's a green belt, my wife requires that I say whether it's Target. You know, we, we are the next up and coming community in the state, in the region. And as you're seeing with the Key Town Loop, as you're seeing with all the things that are coming, we, we are a destination. So my vision of Waukees is going to be continuing on that plan, planning out our community in a sustainable way, planning out our community in an environmentally friendly way, planning out our community in a way that every house doesn't look like the one right next to it, that there are some design elements that are maybe common, but, but differentiate and then make it continue to be the premier community to live in, in our state.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Well, we have allotted a minute and a half for closing statements and with that, we'll begin with Ben, please.
Thanks again for everybody for being here and hopefully it wasn't too boring for you, Maya. She's nodding, it was. It's exciting for me, but yeah, you know, I'm going to finish with one thought I, I cut myself off on when I flipped the wrong card. We were talking about, you know, keeping the hometown feel and everything. One of the things that we're, that we're working on is kind of this neighborhood design strategy. You don't want to have haves and have nots. You don't want to have neighborhoods that are, you know, just separated and, and, and just don't, don't work together as one unit. So that's something that I'm, you know, I'm interested in designing neighborhoods that include everyone. But otherwise, you know, I'm really excited for the future of Waukees. Great things going on, great things coming. And I just would be happy to continue being a part of it. Thanks for being here and I think you guys do.
Thank you, Ben. Anna?
Yeah, I will start first and foremost with gratitude. Gratitude toward all of you for participating. Gratitude toward our staff for doing such an incredible job managing the city every day. And especially gratitude toward everyone that elected me in the first place. Because I am grateful for being raised in such a wonderful community. I'm grateful for growing up with many of people that you know, many of your friends and family. Because this, this is a community that, that shapes people and has the ability to shape thousands and thousands of more people. And then I will conclude with a quote from a very wise man that said that ninety percent of leadership is showing up. And that could not be more true. And I think we get the opportunity to show up every day for people that are our neighbors, that, that maybe don't know how to speak up for themselves or are uncomfortable doing so. We have a job that only these five people have. We're the only five people that can vote and make these decisions, the hard decisions, the harder votes, the votes that involve a lot of foresight and planning and, and thinking about the future and how we can keep this, this hometown sustainable and preserve what we have here.
Okay, Charlie?
If you've been in our community for a while or you're new to our community, welcome. If you like Waukees, if you love Waukees, if you like what you've seen, if you like what's happening, there's a lot of thought that goes into that, there's a lot of planning that goes into that and it's been my absolute pleasure to do that and participate in that. I would absolutely love the opportunity to continue to do that for the next four years. I think I bring a very unique skill set as a business owner, as an attorney, as having an MBA, as a father. I see a lot of issues as a generally risk averse individual. I see a lot of issues and I ask our city staff to correct a lot of issues that maybe they don't see or they're looking at from a different viewpoint. Whether that's safe crossing for schools, whether that's making sure that in areas around roundabouts, there's plenty of safe crossing because I hate those things. I'm not afraid to go against the grain when the conventional wisdom says something and maybe that's not how I think. So if you're looking for somebody who's going to continue to do their absolute best to represent you, to listen to you, to vote for you, please vote for me November 2nd. If any of that's not true, if you don't like where things are going, please let me know. And then real quick, I'm going to use the rest of my time. There's a little girl, sorry, a young woman in our community who's having some issues with some kidneys. Her name's Sophie. She's got a fundraiser November 13th. Take a look. I believe she's having a pancake breakfast. This woman could use some help, but I think that this is a fantastic way to use my tiny little platform to hopefully do some good for her. So thanks, everyone, for coming out.
Yeah. Thank you, Charlie. Mike?
Interesting thing as I've been campaigning and knocking on doors, I always ask, what are your thoughts about the city? What issues do you have? And most, I'd say ninety-nine percent are saying, oh, nothing, man. We really, we really like living here. So congratulations to all the incumbents here and the staff. You're all doing a great job. What I will bring is just a slightly different perspective. I joked that there's no issues that I can differentiate between the incumbents. We're, you know, we've all been talking about the same thing. But I will, like I say, bring a little bit of a different perspective. That, that work in city government, I've worked in state legislatures before. Even now I am a student at Drake University in political science. So I, I like learning and being in public service and in the political environment.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Anna, Charlie and Ben, thank you on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce for your years of service to the city of Waukees. Thank you for your willingness to run for reelection. Mike, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring, so to say, and giving us voters a choice. We want to thank the audience that's with us here this evening. Thank you for all being here and like to remember all of you to be sure and vote in the general election on November 2nd. So on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you for being here this evening and wish you all a pleasant good evening.